Front of the building. Where all the people were at. There was a big group of people.
They kept looking and looking. But I ate the shrimp.
I probably made about, uh... At least two hundred of them.
Gellman, you ready? Okay. Good morning, everybody. It's 9:00 AM. Time for the November 12th, 2014 Delray County Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Phillies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Ciliano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item two is a public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited to the discretion of the chair. At all times, use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to provide testimony today on anything that is not on our agenda? Okay, see none. Move on to approval of the minutes for October 22nd, 2014. Any changes? Any... I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion and we approve October 22nd minutes.
I'll second the motion. Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Sting.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is passed. Then asked to move, uh... Item 7B up at this point in time. Uh, Mr. Spata will take the floor. This is 7B is the introduction of, uh, Michael Washam, new Assistant Director, Planning Branch. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Mike Spata, Resource Management Agency. Uh, to begin with, I appreciate your indulgence in moving up this item, uh, to be, uh, presented now. The matter before you is, uh... is a pleasure and an honor for me to introduce and announce, uh, to your commission, Mike Washam, as the new Assistant Director, uh, in charge of the Planning Branch. Uh, that title also comes with it, uh, to be the Planning Director. He is serving, or has served, the past three years as the Economic Development Manager, and for the time being, he will continue to serve in that capacity as we go through a strategic reorganization of RMA, which we will roll out most likely next, uh, next calendar year. Um, let me just briefly say that, um, uh, Mike has the academic background, the business background, as well as the commitment to carry out the strategic management system, which has been implemented for the past three years at the Planning Branch, and which we're now in the process of extending and applying agency-wide to the Public Works Branch and to the Administration Branch. Academically, uh, Mike graduated summa cum laude from Cal Poly in Pomona with a degree in Business, Finance, and Law. He has over twenty years of experience in the private sector in Business, um, Finance, and Real Estate, and he also has been intimately involved for the past three years to carry out the mission of the Board and the CAO, which is that the county is open for business, and as a result, the Resource Management Agency has accepted that challenge and for the past three years has carried it out. So in keeping with continuing and expanding that message, uh, Mike is the person to lead the Planning Branch at this time, and we certainly wish him well, uh, in that endeavor. So, uh, with that, uh, that concludes my presentation, and I just want to, uh, make it clear that, uh, we will continue with, uh, our objectives as we carry them out, and I think Mike, leading a very competent, very capable team, will be very successful. Thank you.
Before you go, do we have a vote on this? I mean, I'm not in favor of that. He's done a great job for economic development, and so I think he's irreplaceable, although he'll do a good job at that. I guess we don't have a vote, huh?
You should think big now.
But, uh, Mr. Washam, uh, you do have the right to rebut anything here that, uh, Mr. Spata has said.
No, no, thank you. I appreciate his gracious words and, uh, look forward to being able to serve the county in this role going forward.
Congratulations. Okay, back to the agenda, and, uh, item four. This is, uh, the parcel map, uh, public hearing. Actions on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless, uh, anyone wishes to discuss any of these items requested, uh, and requested that to pull, uh, for a separate public hearing. Uh, no staff presentation will be given on any of these items. We've got several today. I'm gonna read the, um, headings on each one, and then, um, so far, let's see. 4A is a tentative parcel map number PPM 14-039 with, uh, Dan Machado and James Winton as associates, uh, as an agent. Uh, 4B is a tentative parcel map number PPM 14-041, uh, Elroy Newberry, uh, trustee for Forrester and Weber and Associates. And then, uh, C, 4C is also, is a tentative parcel map, PPM 14-042, also for Elroy Newberry, with, um, the trustee of, uh, Forrester and Weber and Associates. Uh, item D is a tentative parcel map number PPM 14-034, uh, Charles H. and Shereen, uh, R. Sheldon, Forrester and Weber on that one as well. And then, uh, E, 4E is a tentative parcel map number PPM 14-035, um, with Frank and Sandra Perachica, uh, with Forrester and Weber and Associates on that one as well. F, our last parcel, tentative, uh, parcel map number PPM 14-037, Jeff Robertson. Um, there won't be any staff presentation as, uh, I'll bring it back here. Is there anybody here that would like to pull any of these items for further discussion? Okay, see none. Uh, is there anybody that needs to refuse themselves, uh, on any of these issues? Okay, see none. I'll open it up to the public. Uh, anybody in the public would like to, uh, make comment on any of these items up, uh, for consideration? Okay, see none. We'll close the public testimony portion and bring it back, uh, to the commission. And, um, um, so, 4A, I'll ask for a motion on this to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, uh, and to, uh, conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-039.
I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
That motion is passed. Uh, 4, um, 7B, I'm sorry, 4B is, uh, to ask for a motion to approve general, uh, rule exemption, uh, consistent with SEQA, and, uh, to conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-041.
I'll make that motion. We approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-041.
Have a second?
Second emotion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, uh, 4C is a, uh, I'll call for a motion to approve the general, uh, rule exemption consistent with SEQA, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-042.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, 4D is, uh, a motion to approve, uh, categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, and to conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-034, with, uh, exceptions and waivers of final map.
I make that motion.
Second it.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
4E is a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, and to conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-035 with exceptions and waiver of final map. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, who's second?
You.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
And then 4F, our last one, is to motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, and to, uh, conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-037. I'll make that motion. I'll second. Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies. Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ciliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
You still have a mind-reading thing there. Do we have a password for the internet? Password for the internet?
Oh, yes, let me get that for you.
Okay, we're moving on then to, um, item five, uh, public hearings. 5A is a zone change, PZ 06-008. This is, uh, Regender Paul Dillon, uh, with, uh, Aifener Consulting Civil Engineers. This is a petition for a zone change amendment on a 77.16 acre parcel from an AE40 to an R1, which is a single-family residential of a sister parcel map, 315-010-009, to construct 190 homes on seven, in seven phases on approximately 44.95 acres. The site is located on the southeast corner of Road 128 and Washington Streets within the community of Early Mart. And Chuck, is there contact? Go ahead, Chuck, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, today, as mentioned, a zone change, uh, EZ 06-008, I'll present it for you. Give you a brief overview of the particular project. The applicant is Regender Paul Dillon. Uh, it's located within the Early Mart Urban Development Boundary. Parcel size is 77 acres. It is, general plan designation is low-density residential, and the zoning is AE40. Uh, one thing I'd like to note is the applicant applied back in 2006. This is one of the longest-carrying projects that we have here at the county, and, uh, hopefully by the end of this year, uh, it will be, um, one way or the other, it would be, uh, out of the, uh, hopper. This, uh, is a picture of the vicinity, Early Mart, along Highway 99, south of Pixley, uh, north of Delano. This is an aerial photo of the particular site in Early Mart. We have 99 running down the center of Early Mart. Off to the west, along Washington Avenue, is the subject property, which is south of the school and adjacent to some residential uses and an agricultural facility, uh, to the east of the site. Right now, this site is in agricultural production. It has trees, almond trees on it. So for today's hearing, uh, this will be the change of zone from AE40 to, uh, R1 single-family residential. It's a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as Board of Supervisors makes the approvals or disapprovals on zone changes. One thing to note, since the Board of Supervisor does make the approval for the zone change, we are also gonna discuss the mitigated negative declaration here today, which will be approved by the Board of Supervisors also. However, um, the tentative map, which I'll explain in a little bit, will come back to the Planning Commission, uh, for, uh, your purview on December 10th. So today, again, recommending to the Board of Supervisors for the zone change and the mitigated negative declaration for the zone change and the tentative map. This is the existing zoning of the site, which is AE40. This will be the new zoning, if approved. The whole site will be zoned R1. On December 10th, as I mentioned, if the Board of Supervisors approves the project and the mitigated negative declaration, the tentative map only will come back to the Planning Commission for your perusal. The tentative subdivision map is 190 lots. On the eastern portion of the site, it's 44.95 acres, and it will be constructed in seven phases. This is a map showing the particular tentative map. The, along Washington Avenue to the north, the first phase, about 35, uh, units. It will also construct a park, ponding basin, to hold the water, stormwater for the particular, uh, project. Phase two, just to the south, and then, uh, finally, phase seven, down in the, uh, southeast corner. Road improvements to be constructed for the particular project. Washington, uh, Street, be improved to engineering standards, and once they get down to the southern end of the project, uh, Road Avenue 448 will be improved, and a lot of improvements to Road 128, which I'll explain in a little bit. General plan consistency. Uh, the particular project is designated as low-density residential. As such, the AE40 is not in line with the designation. This zone change will bring the, uh, AE40 zone to R1, which will be inconsistent with the general plan density of, low-density, within the urban development boundary, which urban development is supposed to go into urban development boundaries. Adequate sites, this has to do with housing element, uh, policy, uh, providing, the county has to provide adequate sites for housing. As such, uh, once the zone change, if approved, will provide adequate sites for housing. Adequate infrastructure. Uh, one thing to note also is after tentative map, that's when the applicant and the county engineering goes through the infrastructure master plan, and one is required upon approval of the final map. So a lot of the infrastructure, uh, to be developed for this particular project, is going to be, uh, developed in this infrastructure master plan. Affordability, the applicant, uh, is proposing low-income housing sites also for the site. The environmental document was a mitigated negative declaration. It's made it for public, uh, review. Uh, we've received four or five comments. Uh, one was from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, which hired the applicant to contact them, uh, for, uh, air permits, and then the rest was from engineering and county other divisions, uh, like environmental health. Uh, one thing to note, as I mentioned, the project is considered as a whole project, a zone change and a tentative map, even though today we're only considering the zone change and the mitigated negative declaration, and we'll bring back the tentative map portion to you. However, environmental-wise, we have to consider the tentative map today also. Water, the biggest thing is water. We received a will-serv letter from the Early Mart PUD that is able to serve the 190 units adjacent to the site. Um, we also, uh, received a state survey in June of 2013, which determined that water quantity and quality in the area is adequate. Uh, currently, the Utility District is constructing a well adjacent to, uh, the project site. This well will can be completed in May of 2015. It is already drilled, and the infrastructure portions of the well is there. The, uh, PUD is, um, uh, needs electrical work to complete the well, and this will be done whether this project is approved or not.
Chuck, uh, I noticed that the, uh, will-serv letter is, uh, this is a multi-phase project. Dennis Keller says it's good for one year. So how do you, how do you watch that?
But, um...
You can continue, but if you get to it.
Uh, the, uh, the will-serv, the, uh, this is up to the, actually, the PUD and the applicant. Uh, they have some negotiations to go through. That will-serv, uh, Mr. Keller doesn't like actually giving will-serv letters, so that is only for the approval of this project. Once it's approved, they will not require a will-serv letter for every phase. That part will be done. So the year will be over, and, uh, if the project is approved, they will not require will-serv letters from the county. Now, I do have mitigation measures that will, the applicant will have to provide a water sustainability report for each phase to prove that they have enough water.
That comes back to RMA.
Uh, yes, correct.
Before they get permits to break ground each phase.
That's correct. And, uh, I have had several discussions with the district engineer, Mr. Keller, regarding the water availability of the site. Uh, the water availability in the area is due to quality, nitrates. Uh, if they have any problems with their wells, it, uh, it is due, uh, due to the nitrates, and it's not due to the quantity of the availability of the water. That is one of the reasons, uh, they are constructing the well that's adjacent to this site to provide more, uh, provide more adequate water, uh, for the entire community. Mitigation measures I was discussing, they have to prepare, uh, water sustainability report for each phase. They have to be annexed into the Early Mart Utilities District. No permits will be constructed that exceed the district's capacity to provide water and sewer services. They have to comply with the Early Mart Public Utility District Standards and Ordinance, and they must comply with the water, any water conservation programs.
Mr. Millies? Maybe, tell me if this is for later, uh, in the seven phases, when, when does the first phase projected, if it's approved, to begin? Or is that contingent upon approval first?
It's contingent upon approval, um, but one thing that will have to be completed after approval of the tentative map is all the infrastructure plans and annexation into the district, uh, and different things, and then they get final map approval. This is probably the hardest part of a ten, of the final map approval. So it could, may be a year, I'm just guessing here, but two years before they even be able to break ground. Like I said, it depends on how fast the infrastructure master plan gets completed.
But it sounds like they've got some issues up here for infrastructure too, right?
That's correct. Uh, the next, uh, step is wastewater. At this current time, uh, the plant does have capacity to serve the site. However, there is no line capacity. The applicant will be required to construct a sewer line from the plant to the site itself. We're talking about a mile here, and the applicant is already prepared to do that. One good thing about the, this new, uh, sewer interceptor line, it will be oversized to meet, uh, future demand. I mean, it'll be really big, so it will provide more sewer service for the west side of Early Mart. So anything else that wants to, uh, develop out there would be able to.
The treatment facilities are on the west side of the freeway, I take it.
Correct. It's on the west side, uh, north, west.
Kind of, it's kind of straight shot from there, right?
Yes. Uh, yeah, it would have to go down Road 128 to the project site. I'll, I'll show you the map in a little bit. Cultural resources. Site right now is currently in agricultural production. It does have trees on the pro, project. Staff inspected the site on April 22nd, 2014, uh, walked the fields, and also, the county obtained a CRIS report on April 30th, 2014, and in this CRIS report, uh, there was nothing that was found on the site to have any cultural, uh, impacts.
Um, was there, was a letter ever sent to the clearinghouse at Bakersfield on this?
Uh, yes, they were. We received nothing from, uh, Bakersfield, but we did receive the letter from the, the clear, and it's not the clearinghouse, it's, um, the Southern San Joaquin Archaeological Purview, uh, I think it is.
Chuck, that's Bakersfield, yes.
Bakersfield. All right.
Is that, is that letter in the report?
Yes, it is. It's, uh, if you look in the mitigated negative declaration, at the back of the comments, uh, I forget exactly what attachment it is, but it is located near the very end of, uh, Continuing on species of concerns, there was a biological report conducted on the site. No species were detected on site. However, due to proximity of, like the Pixley Wildlife Refuge and freeway corridors, and within the range of three species, the kit fox, the Tipton kangaroo rat, the blunt-nosed leopard, the project does have typical mitigation measures to protect those species. Most of them are pre, uh, construction surveys, covering manholes, et cetera. Circulation, road improvements to Washington Street, Avenue 48, Road 128, and internal will all be protected to engineering standards, which will be done in the improvement plan. And Caltrans updated the fair share for road improvements also for the interchange, and they were satisfied with the, uh, traffic impact study.
Who collects that money and when?
Excuse me?
Who collects the money?
Caltrans.
Okay, so they have to pay Caltrans in time of permits, like school fees?
Correct.
For each phase?
Right, and it's usually up to the applicant and Caltrans when that, when that... As such, the recommendation today, before your planning commission, is in two motions. This is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, remembering that we will bring back the tentative map on December 12, uh, 10th, I'm sorry. I recommend approval of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigating monitoring program for the zone change, and recommend approval of the zone change to Board of Supervisors. That includes staff report, the applicant and, uh, property owner is here today, they can also answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Go ahead.
My question is, um, I have some experience with these little communities and the bad water that they have. Is there any consideration in doing, uh, dual systems, you know, like the fire water would just come from, you know, the high nitrate water and saving the better water for drinking? I mean, how do, we, because I know, like, Strathmore, there's a big issue there. We, we could've had our fire protection from a well, uh, which is not drinkable.
And I am unaware that the Utility District is pursuing any of those, uh, type of actions. If you'd like, we could, Mr. Keller, and come back to you or send you an email.
Was the new well, uh, pot, drinkable? I mean, does it meet the standards?
Correct, yeah, it's, it's pretty much ready to go. There is water in it. Uh, it's been tested. Uh, as I said, it's already drilled. The piping's all in, inside the hole, and the machinery is up top. It just needs, uh, they're out to bid for electrical work to, uh, complete the well right now.
On the, um, Avenue 48 side of it, um, is there a plan to bring Avenue 48 all the way across the railroad track, or, 'cause I, it doesn't seem that Washington is a big enough street for that many more houses to come around through there.
Right now, Washington Street is pretty empty. There's not a lot of traffic going out on the east, on the west side of it.
They have the school there.
They have the school there, and, uh, no, Avenue 48 right now is dirt. It will not be going east of the project site. It will be going west, uh, toward Road 128 and developed as a three-quarter street, I believe. I have to talk to the engineering, but, uh, it will not be going east toward the railroad tracks.
In this condition, before, we, we've had them take it out. Uh, no firearms shall be allowed on this project. This is rural America, and most people carry guns around here. Uh, I understand the intent is so that you don't shoot a kit fox or something, but no firearms shall be allowed on the project's side.
Is that a comment letter?
What? What are your conditions?
That was a standard condition. It's what we've gone through before.
Oh, I see.
Compared by fish and game.
That's not a condition, that's a letter of opinion though, isn't it?
Recommendation.
Pardon me? You're not allowed to shoot kit foxes. I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of Chuck.
Sure.
Uh, back to water again.
Sure.
Um, on the will-serv, and I know that Mr. Keller doesn't like to do that, so he kind of pooh-poohs this off, but is this for the entire project, or is it for phase one?
It is for the whole 190 units for this particular one.
Okay.
Um, again, it has to be annexed into the district, and they do have negotiations between the Public Utility District and the applicant. It would be for the whole 190.
Yep.
Now, beyond the 190, remember, this, uh, site is only 44 acres, the whole site is 77. They do not have water for remainder of the site.
They do not?
Do not.
So, what's the option? Are they gonna drill another well?
No, I'm sorry, um, the will-serv is only for the 44 acre. They would have to go back to the district for the, uh, for the remainder of the lots, and they would have to come back to us for, uh, to subdivide that portion.
Okay, and then the other question I have, I'm sorry, is, uh, you mentioned that these are low-income sites. Are they all low-income, or it's low-income mixed in?
I would have to ask the applicant about that, but I'm assuming it would be about 20% not... 20%, not all of them. However, it is within Early Mart, and most of the houses down there are considered low.
Okay.
Chuck, I want to get back to the firearm thing here, and
Sure.
We don't mind an opinion from Fish and Game on what they'd like to do, but if there's any conditions of approval that reflect that opinion, then I'd like to remove the requirement that no firearms be allowed on the place.
We can strike that from the condition.
Yeah, I'd like to probably, and I think we've had this discussion before.
Yes.
We kind of had instructed the staff to, just as a matter of condition here, to do that, strike it each and every time.
I will have that removed from the conditions.
Okay, alright.
Chairman, they really outdid themselves in trying to fool me how to read these.
There's a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Since you put it in the report, did everybody understand this clearly?
Have any questions?
I've had it since Monday.
On it?
I don't know longer than that, but just kind of, would you like a tutoring session? Well, just go to one page and...
It's all for the record.
That's right. Go ahead, Chuck. So you said you were finished with your presentation?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to maybe ask you, Chuck, in that letter, I did see it, it's one page and it's double-sided, I didn't see it at first, but they did ask during ground disturbance activities to require another looksee at the property. And this is where we need to clarify this, because you're asking for someone that knows what they're looking at, not just...
Chuck, what I would suggest at this time is that we do put a condition of approval, that if there are ground disturbances, we put this in as a condition.
Because it's just that one thing, and I think that would help us get kind of a baseline for any of those kind of projects.
Correct.
It's big enough that I think that warrants it.
It was old enough that it doesn't follow our standard protocol as we've gone through the process, but we can put that in as a condition.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
One more question on need of the home sites, and I'm sorry, I have not read the Early Mart plan completely, but is this going to meet the needs, or is it going to, is it over the needs? And I did not find a amount.
According to the housing element of the new regional housing needs assessment provided by the state, county-wide number, and the county has to provide over 7,000 units within the next five years. The county does not develop units, however, we have to plan or provide enough space for these units, and as such, once the zone change is done, there'll be space for 190 units out of the 7,000.
But it's county-wide? It isn't particularly?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, it's not particularly Early Mart itself.
Oh, okay.
And one thing to note, I did speak with some of the citizens of Early Mart, and they are very happy about new housing coming down to this area.
What is the ag, the ag that's in production right there in that area?
It's trees.
Just different tree crops?
Aren't there some vines down just a little bit?
I recollect, like I said, it was April when we went out to the site. Most of the surrounding areas to the east were in row crops. This one, I believe, is in almonds, this subject site. To the south was open ground, probably row crops itself also. I don't remember vines, but there probably is some out there.
On 56 is where the vines are at.
Oh, that's, I knew I saw the vines someplace.
Anything else? Hey, this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public testimony portion. I'd like to have the applicant or his agent come forward. Please give us, over here, sir, your name and address for the record.
Bernard Ortiz Salgado, 1224 33rd Street, Bakersfield, California. I'm with Affinar Consulting Civil Engineers.
What kind of, what tree, are they almonds that are on the property now?
Yeah, the applicant currently farms the land, he's a farmer, and there are almonds there.
Okay, do you know how old the trees are? Come up here, we've got this taped, so identify yourself, and then, go ahead.
My name is Rajinder Paul Dillon, live in Alameda County, P-852 Antonini Way, Pleasanton, California, and I do farming operation here in Early Mart.
And so?
And I know, these are planted almonds, and all 77 acres, and the plantation done in 2005.
2005, okay, alright. Other questions on? Alright, well, there you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to provide testimony? Anybody that might be against this project, now's the time to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony portion, move it back to the commission for discussion. We have a recommendation before us.
Just to clarify, the recommendation is to recommend to the board the approval of the mitigated negative declaration and the monitoring program, and recommended of the zone change to the Board of Supervisors, with the condition for the cultural aspect to it, and removing the firearms provision in the standards.
I like the idea, it's seven phases, and just wanted to say, I think it's a good project, it provides housing for part of our county that needs housing, and so I'll go ahead and make that motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approve the change of zone, PZ-06-008, parcel number 3151010009, to construct 190 homes in seven phases on approximately 45.95 acres, located southeast corner of road 128 and Washington Street within the community of Early Mart.
I'll second that.
Hold on one second. Chairman, we need a sequoia motion.
But I'll make the sequoia motion first.
First.
Same TM-800, PZ-06-008, to the Board of Supervisors, we recommend to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, okay?
The mitigated deck is part of where the recommendation goes?
Correct. That needs to go first.
That's for the, that's for the tentative map, right, Bill, and the zone change, is that what you're, this is the sequoia action on both of them?
Correct.
Two actions. That's two actions, Chairman, so the two separate motions, and it is for the tentative map and for the rezone itself, but the rezone needs to go to the board first, for their approval.
Make that motion again.
I'll second.
Just for clarification purposes, can we go through the motion again?
Okay, I would recommend to the Board of Supervisors to adopt mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring plan for TM-800 and PZ-06-008, to approve the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Is that it?
Perfect.
Yeah, give me...
Then we need the second motion. Take a vote on this first.
Right, right. We'll need a second, we have a second, we have a second right here.
Second that.
Okay, roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Liliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, I make recommend to the Board of Supervisors approve the change of zone, PZ-06-008, that's our map, 315-010-009, to construct 190 homes in seven phases on approximately 44.95 acres, located at the southeast corner of road 128, Washington Street, within the community of Early Mart.
I need a second. I'll second the motion. Roll call?
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
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 Willatch?
Yes.
Liliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Both motions have passed.
Thank you for consideration, and remember, we will be back December 10th for the tentative map portion itself.
Chuck, I do have a question on, and I realize that Caltrans is, when it makes a decision, you mentioned that, just in your consideration for further, that Washington Street is pretty empty?
For the moment, yes.
There's one night of the week where it's extremely busy, and that's Friday nights. And I'm wondering if Caltrans is even considering that. I, this many more homes, that street's gonna be a problem on Friday nights, I can tell you that right now.
The most traffic studies are peak hour, which is usually around 5 o'clock, and...
That's not peak hour.
And it'll be later after.
Friday nights after, where it is tough to get to that street, and I hope...
Here in the improvement study, Mr. Bond and Craig Anderson can look at.
Velma, I can't read this.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on now, we're going to item six, which is the continued public hearings, and, yep, and I'm gonna turn this over to Aaron Bach, he's going to give us the latest development.
Yes, Chairman Diaz, Commission. We are requesting at this time to continue, hold the public hearing today, but we'll continue the meeting to date certain on December 10th, 2014. We had some questions, and we just want to perfect the record before we take this matter to the board, so this would be the simplest and easiest way is to continue this to December 10th, but to hold the public meeting today.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I've continued the public hearing, I will open it here again on this continued item. Is there anybody that would like to make comments at this meeting? Good morning, give us your name and address, please.
Jenny Byers, 291 North Main, Porterville. I came before you guys last time. I really do appreciate staff's ability to work with city staff. It's been a nice collaborative effort, and so I appreciate all the work that Aaron and Dave have done with the project.
You think we'll be able to move on this next time?
I do, yeah. So the questions were really minor, and so, yeah.
Okay, good, just so we can get it done this year. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, this is, I will continue the public hearing, and at the date certain. Do I have a motion for a continuance?
I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Okay, and the date again, Velma?
December 10th.
December 10th, okay. Roll call?
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Liliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I do have a request. If that's the case, could we turn our trees back in to Velma so that, and she could give them to us again, instead of us walking out and throwing them away? Or will they change?
No, the comments themselves should not change. If anything moving forward, we'll probably provide another memo, so we won't have to provide that much paper.
Okay.
And it's the same one we had at the last meeting?
Right.
Well, basically, we're trying to reuse that old one. I did provide an emailed, updated clarifications.
Yeah, hold on to it.
But hold on to it, and we will provide in the same format clarifications via email. And we'll provide another memo as to any final changes.
That is no good, this...
Again, there were some clarifications in it, just use that as background information. You were emailing the updated version, and in our next meeting, we will provide a clarification sheet that will show all the changes, but it's not worth printing out a whole nother copy of it.
Great.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to item seven, 7A is adopt the planning commission calendar for 2015. We've got that here before us. Any dates there that looks like it's gonna, causing anybody, hard eight?
Thank you so much for not planning one during the farm show.
Yep.
So I think we also, at the meantime, if we vote this, then we need to pick the customer to vote for the chairperson for next year too, also.
Is that on this agenda or the last agenda?
I will add that to the December 10th.
Yeah, it's the last agenda.
Oh, okay. Who is it, anyway?
I believe it's, no, Mr. Dong.
It would be me.
Yeah, even if he votes no, we'll vote him. Okay. Okay, so anyway, I need, I need a motion here to approve the Planning Commission calendar for 2015.
I make that motion to approve the Planning Commission calendar for 2015.
Second that. Roll call?
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Liliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I was gonna say too, there is a little wiggle room in there, just in case.
Yeah, so that motion has passed.
I think we're okay.
We've done 7B, so we will move on to 8, which is a director's report. 8A is a planning director update. Who's got that? Our new planning director?
Well, I'll start it, but the able staff here is really the people who run the show. I just like to keep in touch with economic development, that's still a focus of the whole branch. Just like you to know that the Early Mart projects are moving forward, there's a lot of activity, not only the map that we're looking at, but the McDonald's is moving forward. That should be coming to you in December as well, correct? For the final site plan on McDonald's in the White River Plaza. There's also more activity in there as well for some multi-tenant retail commercial in there as well going forward. Then there's, the health, medical health clinic is under construction now in Early Mart, next to the Early Mart Elementary Park. So there's a lot of activity going on in Early Mart right now. And with that, I'll just pass that over for each person to talk about their own.
Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Commission, what we're working on now is obviously getting the Traver Community Plan up to the board, working on a staff report for that, so we'll be before the board in December with our first updated community plan. Staff, Dave Bryant and Mike Spot himself are still working with Three Rivers, and they had two meetings over the last two weeks, and it sounds like very successful meetings. And they're really getting down to some hard policy work now, so it's, again, very successful. We are moving forward on Goshen, pretty hard, we're trying to get an environmental document out before the end of the year. The community plan is, we're just at the last few meetings with the community, there are some changes we'll see, really to the west side of Goshen based on what Caltrans is doing, and so we're looking forward to working the, moving the urban development boundary around a little bit to give more land to Visalia on the west side, and to expand our boundary, I'm sorry, expand the boundary on the west side, and give land to Visalia on the east side, and based on the findings we have to make, it kind of has to balance out. You know, we could only do so much infill, or do so much infill before we could expand the urban development boundary. So we're working on that currently, and that has a lot to do with their general plan and what they plan to do in the city, so working on those cleanup issues. We're also going to start moving pretty fast and furiously on the rest of the community plans that we just did the GPI's on. So Early Mart will be our next big target, and we've already had some discussions with the community and some of the people who were interested previously in that one, so that'll be our next big push, besides also finishing up the community of Pixley. The Complete Streets program was approved by the board at the last board meeting for Pixley, so we moved through that as quickly as we could, so it looks like from this point moving forward, we have a real template, really, to how to do a complete street, and we'll be adding that to each one of the communities moving forward. I did want to note, the Conwy Creek program was approved, environmental impact report was approved by the board at the last board meeting, and I'll allow Mike and Hector to embellish a little bit more on that, but that was, you know, since I've been here, we've been working on that, so that was quite a success. Outside of that, again, you're seeing Dillon, which is our oldest project, moving through the process. This is Methuselah of them all, so that, once that's completed, we really don't have see what these community plans bring out as far as future subdivision maps, but this will be the big one.
Aaron, why was that one delayed for so long? It didn't seem to be that controversial.
At the end of the day, I think it, they were looking for some of the conditions for water and working, the market, as they're saying, the economy, that really, was the driver, but I think they see the opportunity at this point, so they sense the change.
Well, probably add to that is the sewer capacity has been an issue there, and so that's probably what was also slowing it down, because that's gonna be expensive. A mile of pipeline, that's.
Yeah, right, 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 and so, it's really just, ting it up.
Negotiation.
Ting it up for the market, but yeah, then it's all a matter of pro forma, if it'll work or not, but as far as the project approval, we do wanna move it through.
And just, I'll, there's a little misconception on housing in Early Mart, he mentioned that it was low-income housing in Early Mart, the houses in Early Mart are as expensive as the ones in Delano, believe it or not. It's very interesting market, it's crazy.
What would a house in that development go for?
I imagine they're gonna be hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand.
I mean, it's so much a square foot to build them, so.
I would've said a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and thirty, I, but is that not considered? What is considered low-income housing? New housing?
That would be low to moderate.
Isn't that low?
That's low to moderate, that's part of the argument, it's part of the, when we're doing the housing element, that's part of the county's position as far as low income, because our market rate can be considered as low to mod income, just free-market housing projects such as in Goshen and other places, so that's one of our points when we're talking with the state regarding affordable housing.
Considering there are no jobs in Early Mart, there's zero jobs in Early Mart, so everybody's going out.
There must be a Dollar General coming in.
They already have one.
There already is, it opened last year, earlier this year.
And now, McDonald's, I can go get lunch, the closest place, that's pretty good.
With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gare.
Not much going on, other than all kinds of EIRs, but we anticipate bringing hopefully two EIRs to your consideration in February, there'll be some technical studies that have to be needed, and going back and forth with Caltrans and the applicant, and we're working on the Pappich Batch Plant, Asphalt Batch Plant, the one that's by one ninety-eight and ninety-nine, and the other project is an expansion of existing mine, the Deer Creek Mine, which wants to basically double its output, but it'll still be within the same footprint, so they're not really, you know, expanding per se, but they're just going to increase output and production. The other thing that Aaron had mentioned was approval by our Board of Supervisors regarding the program EIR for the Cottonwood Creek Project, that's an integrated project that will have a private component to it, it's essentially three EIRs, one program EIR, and I'll let Mr. Bond elaborate on the flood control and how it's gonna be very effective at that, but I really like this project, it's a public benefits project, and it's going to do a lot to, for the environmental component of it regarding biological, the water recharge, and those good components by controlling the floodwaters, of course, we're gonna prevent damage from occurring to private properties, public uses like the juvenile detention facility, roadways, that, just a lot of stuff that's gonna be preventative. Last big flood event in that area flooded out the school that's nearby, so it's needed. Now, ironically, during the dry times, it's a perfect opportunity for that project to get underway, and with that, I'll just give it to Mr. Bond.
Another speaker.
Mike Bond, Public Works, I just wanna say that the final EIR for Cottonwood Creek is a milestone for the flood control district. The flood control commission, it's an effort of their hard work over quite a bit of time, and a concentrated effort over a period of a year. The flood control commission identified fifteen flood control projects, of which the top three were selected, and the top project in that select three is the juvenile detention facility, so it's a very important project, and it would have not been possible but for the good work that Hector and Aaron did. This collaborative effort between Public Works and the Planning Commission cemented our relationship, and in addition to that, something very innovative that Aaron Bach was, did a masterful job, is he was able to concurrently, while the IR was being processed, he concurrently processed for all the permits, which is not an easy task, that's a Corps of Engineers, that's Fish and Wildlife, and so a lot of credit is owed to Aaron for pulling that off, so we're essentially at a point where, essentially, we do have the permits in hand that we can proceed. This is, timing is a little interesting, about a year ago, we would have been a solid candidate for grant funding to proceed with one or more of the flood control projects, but the drought and the drinking water focus has made those grants a higher priority, unfortunately, so we're now in a position where we have to seek grants to, in essence, leverage our flood control balance for these projects, but we're, we've got a good team, Mike Washam and Economic Development and our new grants division are all teamed up to try to make sure that that occurs too. And just a final note, the Dillon Project was, that the time period, this is another one where, prior to Aaron coming on the board, I was involved in that project, and they, the applicant, the developer deserves a lot of credit, because they redesigned the project, and if you look at the previous layout, it was essentially a high-yield plan, I'll call it, and now, essentially, it's a lot of benefits with internal circulation, et cetera, so this is a better map coming before your commission, so, thank you.
Thank you, it's kinda hard to get money for flood control items when it hasn't rained in three years.
Well, and I think we'll be using some of the reclamation aspects of that project to bolster the funding.
Good. John, would you like to report to the commission and staff here what we did at the Planning Commission?
Well, I certainly would, but I think there were four of us that attended, and I think it'd be really good to have each person say a little bit of their impressions. One thing I can say about having it in Merced County, it was very relevant to what we're doing here in Tulare County, we had an outstanding program, wasn't very well-publicized, so a lot of people didn't get to take advantage of it, but those of us that trusted in the process were well-rewarded by going there, and I want Wayne probably to comment on the economic development aspect of it, but they're not going after Dollar Generals, I can tell you that, it was, it was really impressive how they handled that process, among other things, and of course, we heard a lot about water and several other things, but maybe we could start with Bill, what stuck out for you?
Well, what really stuck out for me was that there were four, four of us out of seven there, and I think we were probably the only planning commission that had, we could've had a meeting, but if we'd publicized it.
Well, Santa Clara had three, so.
They had, we had four.
Yeah, but they were all happy to be there, they're on the board.
You know, this valley could be in for, I call it a depression, because they gave us the chain of where the water's going to go, who has priority, and the priority are salmon, number one, that's number one, agriculture has no priority at all, and people who have been taking water out of the canal, the people who actually built the early canals in the late eighteen hundreds, this is the first time they had to get water from agreements that they had from, I think it's the Friant Kern Canal.
It's basically that upper fork of the San Joaquin River.
Right, that hasn't happened for forty-five years, and so, you know, we could have a lot of rain, and then the other thing that happens is, you don't, maybe you don't know this, but I was in the irrigation business and attended Cal Poly Sandalas Abyspo, took a lot of classes on engineering of irrigation systems, we have subsidence, once it happens, it's too late, and so they're talking about ways that, of course, I don't know who knows about it, but ways that we can maybe stop the subsidence, by not taking the water from the upper aquifers and going deeper, we seal those off, and then recharging the, I'm not sure what aquifers, but water, water could be the death of the San Joaquin Valley, because agriculture, which, we're the number one agriculture-producing county in the United States, I guess, if you don't have water, it's gonna be a sad day for our valley, and so, it's all about politics, but it's also about rain, Nancy knows more about it than I do, because that's how they make their living, on farming, but it's, to me, that's the most frightening thing of all, was destroying our economy.
Interesting about the homes in Early Mart, and there are, there are, what is working there are ag jobs, that's what's there, so, can only hope that those continue on, and that we need more workers, instead of less.
Question about, going back to that project, there was a hundred and ninety homes, I think, in that project, and there's a well, I heard there's a well already drilled, the casings in, pumps up, and I don't know if I asked them, there's Chuck, he could answer that question. I'm glad you came, your timing is impeccable. Who owns that well?
Irrigation District, right?
Irrigation District?
Early Mart?
Early Mart owns that well over?
Public Utility District owns.
So, it's, you said it has water capacity today?
It's, well, in May, when they actually, they expect it to come on.
Capted into something down.
That's correct, yes.
So, this is just brainstorm stuff, we've got other areas we've been delivering bottled water to, is that right? We've got other little communities that are running out of water, does it make sense to think out of the box and say, well, here we've got a well sitting down there, it's not being utilized, and sure, you know, Early Mart will say, well, whoa, we don't wanna, we don't wanna deplete that water table, giving it away to other communities, but, as an interim fix, why can't we take water from that well and provide it to communities that have run out of water, not in great quantities, but just, you know, to sustain them through this period? Because, I mean, there may be legal issues here, and environmental issues, health issues, I mean, there may be all these issues, but I'm sitting there listening to this this morning, I'm going, I know we're delivering bottled water someplace, so why can't we fill up tank trucks and deliver some water to those little communities that don't have it, so I'm just throwing that out there.
There's a number of hurdles to overcome when you're looking at that, right now, one of the extreme prohibited is the cost of transportation on potable water in a tanker-truck environment, that is, that's through the roof, we do have water that's being provided that's not potable, the bottled water strictly for the drinking, but then we also have those other uses for being able to fill your toilet with a bucket of water, to be able to flush it, and bathing and all that, that is being done with non-potable sources, and we are working with that, in East Porterville, there's a number of, of storage tanks that are put up and water delivery that way, but the biggest piece is the transportation of potable water is extremely expensive to try to do it in trucking-type environment.
So it's, so it's not cost justified, even if people need it?
Well, we're getting water with other supplies, there's other ways to get the water, that's the biggest hurdle, and most of the bottled water is going to the, to qualify for the bottled water deliveries, it's private wells that are contaminated and going out, if they're within a community that's in a community system, then they're not getting bottled water because they have access to the system, then we're looking for other fixes if it's a community system.
Some of those fixes are having to do with areas that have had water at ten, twenty, fifteen feet, those wells should've been redrilled to over two hundred, twenty years ago, and so, like, I think it was a community north of here, out your way, Mel.
Fidel?
Yetum?
Yetum?
Yetum, it was a matter of just drilling a deeper well, and they have adequate water, so East Porterville and other, the wells are not deep enough, and you'd find a well driller.
We are looking at all options, there's alternatives, we're looking at funding to develop a well, knowing that that could be a possible source of water, and then having tanks right there, and then that well at some point in the future could potentially be hooked up to a distribution center, or system, as part of the, a permanent solution or other temporary, so we're looking at those ideas already, and looking for funding.
The other thing, we're drilling through that clay layer at four hundred feet, and there's water there, but there's no way to recharge it, so, we have some serious water issues, I mean, you know, someone, somewhere up here needs to look down, almost like God, and say, this is Tulare County, we know, Tulare County, we know what the water level is in every community, but it's a secret, because that information is private, every well that's been drilled is at the county, and with the way we have computers now, you could track each one of those wells and all the levels, and you, I bet you could do it, or maybe somebody had to do it, a very interesting profile of where the water is and what depths.
Well, actually, it's not so secret now, because, you know, you do have the water coalitions, all the districts have formed water coalitions, and farm, ag people have had to sign up and say how deep their wells are.
Every little one-acre lot or five-acre that has a, you know, a house on it, that's a secret.
They are suppo, that's, I said that wrong, it's not just ag, it's, they are also supposed to sign up, it's by parcel, isn't it? I think, I know we just bought this piece of property that has the parcel, and I had to sign it up on.
That's something new, I'm sure.
With the Water Coalition, because I had a well, so, they are.
I've never seen a water map, you know, I've seen some old Army Corps of Engineer maps for where they think things are and soils, but.
This is really new, but it's going to happen, I mean, you're gonna be required to say how deep your wells are.
We had a presentation at our town meeting that, that's, you know, Mr. Spada and Dave Bryant were there too, and theirs was on community plan, but before that, we had a water presentation. The State Water Resources now, they've been garnering grants and studying each of the major drainages in the Sierra, and they finished pretty much the one for the Coia, and they showed a map in that presentation, which, by the way, we're gonna have an in-depth article on that in the paper next week, and it showed the distribution of how all the wells, where they are that have failed, and then, an in-depth look at all the drainages that contribute to the Coia, and what's going on with the wells there, and there were actual depth information for where the wells were distributed, and what it showed was, not a single well has failed in the Coia drainage, except for a couple of the surface ones that were taking it right out of the river, but when you look down toward the valley and the flatlands, failures all over the place, and so, the moral of that story was, you know, that the Sierra is still holding in those rock fractures enough water to support all the people that are up there, and we're actually in pretty good shape in Three Rivers, but down in the flatlands, and this is something that came out in the conference, this water bond that passed is so critical, because it's, you know, it's going to have, it has money in there for storage and banks and recharge, and we have to really make sure that we get a share of that from Tulare County. But, the interesting part of it, on the Friday afternoon, we went on a tour of the wetlands, and they have a huge wetlands area in Los Banos, and this is one of the problems with recharging our water, is that the wetlands are all gone, we have five percent of our historical wetlands are left, and about ninety percent of that is right there in Los Banos, so the farming they're doing, and what they're doing there, they actually, and the water rights is another part of this, they're actually in a lot better shape than we are, so. part of this, they're actually in a lot better shape than we are. So our hope really is to get some of this water bond money and make sure it's directed to Tulare County. I mean, that's what we gotta do immediately if we're gonna try to plan it all for the long range. But the valley, because of draining off the water table in years like this, there, there's gonna be a lot more failures.
After we let UC Irvine, this is a question for Ed, maybe you saw it and I didn't. But that, that university is a beautiful campus.
You mean at Merced?
Merced, I'm sorry, Uni, Cal State Merced. You know, the, the little gal that gave us the tour, she was a really bright, nice young woman, talking about the cattle and how they raised cattle and the mental money went back to scholarships. But there's no agricultural portion of that college. It's all, there's, there's nothing to do with agriculture.
Well, traditionally, there are not in UCs. And they've.
UC Davis.
Well, UC Davis is where you go. And that's always been the farm.
But we're in the middle of agriculture.
Well, that's the thing. If we would have had it in Tulare County, it would have had a program from the start. But Fresno State and Cal State Bakersfield wind so much of the regions and said, we don't want that because we won't get those students. You know, they'd go here, but we would have had.
It would have some components that you're raising cattle there.
Well, yeah. But you know, and that was another thing they pointed out there. That was a key determinant of why Tulare didn't get the university was they have more water.
I think that young woman had, didn't know which end of a cow the milk comes out, so.
From Orange County, come on.
I know.
Those weren't milk cows anyway, Bill.
I know. I was the guy running the top of the hill.
But it all, it all ties together and water really was an incredible part of this. What I thought, you know, in terms of the economic development, what kinda surprised me is I go to the Ag Show every year and there's a big Texas pavilion and they're trying to talk all the Californians to move to Texas. Well, what Merced did, Merced County, is they got a hot shot Texas guy and they send him to Texas to talk them into coming here. And there, they talked about a couple successes that were really impressive.
They got Google, they got Google.
Yeah, well, they, they also have a closed Air Force base and they have a really good situation where they can put manufacturing-type companies. And one they talked about was this huge crane manufacturer from Kansas that relocated to Merced County. Thousands of jobs, it's gonna turn out to be, and lots of money for the county. And the whole consideration in this was that, that is our proximity to the Pacific Rim. And they, some of these companies are seeing that this trade is going to be incredible. So that's what we really need to target in our economic development. I know, you know, the McDonald's and the Dollar Generals are, you know, needed services too, but these big projects, we have a good situation here and I'm pretty sure we could land a few of them if we're really interested in doing that. Especially if we revive that rail line on the, you know, that Alan Ashita's big on. So, I mean, there's a couple of things like that that came out in this conference that you have to go to these conferences to find out.
Well, we do, we, we do focus on highlighting the location of Tulare County in regards to proximity to the ports, the export. Tulare County's prime piece is that we're centrally located, almost pixely is, is, is dead center between the three major ports in, in California. So when there's a labor dispute or disruption at one port, a company can easily switch to, to a different location. Right now, Seattle's having issues with getting their apples out of the port. So one of the, one of the key things is, is that that's one of the things that we, we promote as far as opportunities, as well as being on the main line of the UP and have the potential for interconnects with Burlington Northern via the shortline rail as well. So those are, those are the key points that we look at when we're marketing.
Yeah. Well, and they have a lot of, you know, the UC Merced has been a real boon to them too in terms of changing how they're looking at the future and what they're gonna do.
Well, when, when companies are looking, they're, they're looking for a work, workforce that's, that has the skills for certain areas of, of manufacturing and, and up. And they look for universities, they look for proximity to that and all that. So those are challenges that, that we have to overcome as well, so.
You know, the big takeaway from the presentation on Saturday by the county, county of Merced, deputy director is Robert Lung. And I have the slide set, by the way, I'm gonna send it to you, Michael, so you can take a look at it. It was well done. They were in disarray as, as an economic development arm. And as he, I think, I don't remember who the, the head person was, but he said it was like a three-legged stool, that the cities and the counties and the economic development corporation. And they've essentially eliminated the, what we have today known as Tulare County EDC. When, the presentation was all about how they reach out and they look at the whole world in terms of their, their, their apple to go after. They do the traveling. The county actually goes out and does the trade shows, visits the, the industries and the industry, or trade organizations. The county doesn't do, the, the county doesn't have effectively a TD, TCE, EDC anymore. So I said, well, the question was, well then, you know, what do you do with the cities, the incorporated? Well, they're beginning to work with them. This is a new model for them.
Well done by memorandums.
And, but it was well done. It looks like it will succeed. And I said to them, well, you know, we've got the VEDC Visalia Economic, we've got the Tulare County, we've got the counties now got their own economic development. You know, never the twain shall meet here, but we need to make some decisions. And I guess I'm saying that to you.
No, I, I, I understand that. As you know, that, that just last year, the, the county board of supervisors decided to withdraw from the EDC. I'm familiar with the Merced, that, that EDC broke apart a few years ago. The cities and the counties pulled out, there was, there, there was infighting and, and, and nothing was getting accomplished. And then they've gradually rebuilt a different way of doing it. I think it's actually the city of Merced, if I believe, that kinda took the lead on it.
They did.
And, and then now is working with the other entities.
And the Castle Air Force Base became a, a big deal because before it was just sitting off to the side and it was underutilized. And now they've, they've said, ah, well, that's really our big industrial park. So the, the things like the crane company that John mentioned, they went off after those guys out in the Midwest.
Tulsa.
And at first it was, well, why do we want to come to California? The first thing, and you know this, we don't want to come to California. It's terrible.
The first thing that anybody will say is sequoia.
Yeah, it's the regulation.
It's gonna cost me, it's gonna take two years and it's gonna cost me a million dollars just to get past that.
But they were able to pull it off by building confidence, the company's confidence in the county to, to give them the best of all of the benefits of coming in there. And it's, you know, it's a beginning. It isn't like they've been doing this forever. It's only about a year old.
Well, the team too, they, their, their guy, the pitch man goes to the planner. And the planner sits down with them and tells them, these are the hurdles and we're gonna get you over them.
Yeah. We, we do that, we do that on, on a case by case when we're talking to prospects. We'll bring in, we'll bring in public works, we'll bring in everybody. And, and some of these meetings, we've had fifteen or twenty people on the meeting and the developers are really impressed at saying, hey, you've got everybody at the table. Whereas when you're in other jurisdictions, we're like making a call to public works, then we're calling the fire department. Then you've got them all at one, in one room and all these questions can be ironed out immediately. And that's, that's the approach we're taking.
Well, I'm gonna send the link to you, take a look at it, because I think it has some merit to build, I mean, you may already have something that you're presenting.
No, I appreciate all, any information is, is great. You always can learn.
Customer to me is a company. And so if you're recruiting customers to come to Tulare County, this is a really cool tool because it, it kinda shows, you know, well, it shows Merced County and its willingness to work with anyone. And, you know, and another thing that blew this whole thing apart in, in the, in the years past is the housing market collapsed, as you all know, in two thousand nine. It melted down. All these little cities like Los Banos have, you know, like eleven hundred finished lots sitting there with no homes. That totally destroyed economic development in the county. So they're slowly but surely working with the cities, you know, to try and get businesses to come in and around the cities so that they have the ability to attract, you know, people to come work there. The question about, and I asked the question of them, what are you doing about the quality of, of the, of the skill sets of the labor, labor force? Because our problem is, when they look at the economic development here in the industrial park, Visalia, well, you don't really have the right kind of skill sets for the kinds of people we need. You know, Amazon, well, Amazon's a little bit different, but, you know, do we have people that can do high-tech type work? And they're beginning to get that message in Merced. They're figuring that out, that they have to get that kind of training. Now, you know, UC Merced doesn't hurt. They have sitting there. But it was a really good presentation. This link to this website, I think, is really good. And, and I'll show it to you. But I think we're on our way. I think we still have to work with the city of Visalia because there's some attitudes about why you're in business. And conversely, you're, you're, you're looking at the city and state.
No, we're, we're actually not. I have a very good relationship with the city of Visalia.
Well, how about the VEDC? Because, you know, we, we just spent, as you know, we spent thirty-five thousand dollars to study the industrial park. And now we've got these three committees. I'm heading the marketing portion of it. And we're looking at how to attract companies into the industrial park. But we really should be partnering with you because you're out there trying to sorta do the same thing.
Right. We're, we're, we're looking.
You should be on the committee, is what I'm saying.
What time do they meet?
That'll help.
Well, you know, we pay. I see it from the money side. We pay to belong to VEDC. And that's how that organization survives is because the fifty or sixty people that belong pay a substantial amount of money. That's where the thirty-five thousand comes from. And that's how we play for an exec, you know? I would much rather spend the same money with the county of Tulare looking at the total picture rather than paying a couple thousand bucks here and a couple thousand dollars there and everybody's competing.
Well, that's what the county of Merced is realized.
You're doing an excellent job. I'm, I'm not, I'm not pointing a finger. I'm just saying, I think we got, we have to get one more link between the biggest city in the county and, and the economic development arm of your organization to work together a little better. I think there's some things we can co-market. And, you know, like I saw with Merced, they're kinda putting, as I always like to say, put all the wood behind one arrow so that they can, you know, take a shot at a company and they're all working for the same common goal. Instead of the VEDC trying to do something and then you're trying to do something. And I think it just, it just makes more sense to me.
I think the idea to introduce, and I've always said TK could be more than what it is. TK, you've got all the local government leaders coming together in that room. And they should take a, make that a function of TK.
Yeah. It was, it was a great conference.
Tulare County Association of Governments.
What about you, Ed? You had, I know you were into it.
Yeah. Again, the biggest issue, of course, that I could, struck me was the water issues and the fact that they've got plenty of water. They got, we, we drove how long down that dirt road?
Way too long.
Thirty, forty minutes down a dirt road.
We saw so much water, we couldn't.
And there was, there was standing water in the refuge on both sides as far as you could see.
Coming across the road.
And they were upset because they only had enough water for thirty-five thousand acres. And we don't have any water at all.
Four hundred and fifty thousand acres are wetlands?
Yes.
Two hundred and forty thousand.
But that's designated water. That's environmental water.
That's still, yeah, that's coming out of the San Joaquin River.
Yeah, it is. It's environmental water.
That's right. And the interesting thing is, even if we get temperance built, the east side's not gonna see much of that water. Most of that's gonna go to environmental to keep, to, to keep, put salmon back in the San Joaquin River.
But even the salmon have a priority over the wetlands. And the guy had a great comment. He said, well, what about all the migratory waterfowl that come from Canada that nest here? They will, they want a place to nest. That's gonna have a direct impact.
Salmon's above that. Did, did they show you the chart? There's a chart.
Or hierarchy? No, we didn't see that. We did, they did show the flow from the Sacramento River out into the bay. And two-thirds of the water just goes right out into the.
That's up the Golden Gate.
Fifty thousand acre feet.
Right into the ocean.
Hundred and fifty million acre feet.
And, and because of, and they know when these, when these, top, these high flows are coming because when you get a rain event, it takes about a day to get down there. And so they could, at that point in time, pump. Because the other thing with, with, with that much flow, the actual fish are, are not up where the, the, the pickups are because they're pushed down a little farther because there's so much volume going down the, the river. And they could pump like that there too, but it's a political thing, they won't let them pump. That's really just pretty discouraging.
I mean, Ed was so discouraged. I went to get him in his room and he was about ready to jump out the window. The trouble is, on the first story.
That's why he's willing to jump.
Well, yeah, but it was very interesting. Little city of Los Banos is pretty progressive. I was impressed with their city manager and whatnot.
Just drive through and you can see it.
They get unbelievable.
A fellow from the Bolds family farm said that they've tried, they're effectively protecting two hundred million, two hundred million dollar salmon industry versus a forty-four billion dollar agricultural industry. That's the trade-off.
We gotta get the balance, imbalance.
A little bit of an imbalance.
The, now, Sunday morning, we had a, a quick little board meeting. And of course, we can announce that Ed's in an alternate district director spot for the, for the central. And we have a guy that's gonna retire next year. He's going off the commission in Sonora. So Ed will be stepping into that spot. And another thing that was really exciting is we have a date. It's October twenty-third for two thousand fifteen. And we're doing June Lake Mammoth. You do not want to miss this one. And I think some of our planners can go too because we're gonna look at the evolution of energy because a lot of the historical stuff is there. And we're gonna tour Mammoth and take a look at the development that has occurred at Mammoth.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah. And we're gonna be at seven thousand feet for where we're staying. So it's going to be a real adventure, but there's always roads open, no matter what. You can always do three ninety-five or however. But I think this is gonna be a, a different kind of experience, but one that we don't want to miss. And there's gonna be a lot.
We may be staying in Bridgeport. That's all close.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a number of options there. He has a resort in June Lake, which is like a retreat center. And we could all stay there together, which is kinda what I like is then the sessions are centrally located and they got great food up there and lots of trout.
Do they have tracks?
They have what?
Tracks to get you in there in case.
Well, they've got, you know, they, they, they're not really snowed in there because they depend on that for their economy. So they.
They keep the roads open.
That's right. They can deal with it, but it's.
They have high-speed internet, fiber optics.
Yeah. They're, they're the most advanced internet you can have. But I, I'll tell you, if it does snow, they're all gonna be happy and so are we.
Yeah.
For sure. Let's hope that it does. But anyway, it's gonna be an exciting program. We've got a date now and everybody put that on your calendar because.
October.
Right. October twenty-third is the Friday.
I must say, Merced County Fed as well though, didn't they not?
Jeez, man. It was scary, all the food.
And where, where was that at?
We went to the wool growers.
He took us to wool growers at lunch and we had to take a bus there in case anybody had the wine. So it was pretty good.
In case, you could get out of there without wine.
Well, yeah. They put it on their ice cream, the bath, so it's pretty interesting.
They served it on the bus.
Yeah. No, it was just top shelf, the whole thing. And, you know, a lot of people, I think, across the state.
How many attendees?
Well, we only had twenty-some. You know, they'd actually pay. And then there were a bunch of people that got comped to the different functions. But the thing was, is a lot of people around the state said, Los Banos? But that's not the way it was at all. It was just really excellent, the whole presentation.
Well, John, other than the people from Santa Clara who were on the board and had to be there.
Right.
There wasn't a soul from the coast that came over. Not a single.
The coast didn't come.
Not a single commissioner was interested in coming over to see what we're doing here. So the rift is still huge. It's still huge.
Yeah.
It's so bad, I don't even go to the ones over there on the coast, so.
I thought you just went to the conferences. Oh, you mean the conferences.
Conferences, yeah.
Chairman Diaz, I just wanted to, before we adjourn here, reiterate, on December tenth, we do need a quorum to make a decision in regards to Porterville. So in lieu of polling and seeing who's gonna be here, I just wanted to put that in.
Yeah.
Be in your bones.
Anybody have any issues, uh, December tenth?
Maybe I could be here if we get a pay raise.
Well, Bill won't be here then.
Okay.
And most of the boards are voting those for themselves, so we gotta try.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Item nine, any planning commission discussion for future agenda items?
Did I get reappointed?
I believe so.
Didn't you have to go fill out papers?
I did, but I never, I never.
Over the phone.
You were on the agenda. I think they did that on consent.
Conversation, you were reappointed.
Yeah. There was, there was, it was a discussion, but you made it.
Yep.
If you're not, that's when you hear.
I was gonna come no matter what, but.
They said you are getting really old.
That's true, I turned seventy, November second.
I know.
So anything for future agenda items, folks? Nothing? We're adjourned until December tenth?